Good morning. It is nine o'clock. I'll call the meeting to order, and if we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The next item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Commissioners, have you reviewed the agenda? And do you have any additions or modifications?
I have no additions or modifications.
I have no additions or modifications.
Okay, if there are none, then I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we adopt the agenda.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Appointments. Item A, Housing Authority. We've had one resignation, and we have an expired term which ended April 11th, or the term ends April 11th, 2023. Applications were due by 5:00 PM September 4th, 2020. We received two applications, and I would like to appoint Darnell Lowry to the unexpired position. So I make a motion that Darnell Lowry be appointed. Do I have a second?
I second it.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Item B, Library Board. We have one resignation. There's an unexpired term which ends May 1st, 2022. Applications are due by 5:00 PM September 18th, 2020. So if you are interested in serving on the library board, please submit your applications. The next item on the agenda is Presentations. West Star presentation on Power Factor Reduction.
Good morning. Thank you all. First of all, my name is Carrie West. I am the Customer Solutions Manager for Evergy, and I work with the City of Independence Accounts along with 75 other accounts in southeast Kansas and southwest Missouri. So thank you for having me this morning. And part of my job is to analyze billing, take a look at accounts, and look for opportunities for cities and customers to be able to save money. And so what I'm here today is to talk just a little bit about your central energy plant account. And I've worked with Kelly and city staff in looking at the account to see if there's ways that you can actually save money. And one thing that I noted is the power factor on that particular account, and we'll get into what power factor is in a minute, but I wanted to just kind of give you an idea. Evergy bills on a 90% power factor. Anything less than that, you're paying an adjustment, which is an up charge. So it would behoove you to take a look at it, listen to what I have to present this morning, and then reach out to some folks, and I'll make a recommendation at the end. So let's kind of tackle what is power factor. Well, actually, let me take one step back. Looking at 2019 usage with the, and we're just talking the central energy plant. So you had a power factor of low of 65%. And even when all of your equipment was running at its peak in the summer, you were still only at 80%. Again, we bill on a 90%. So you're leaving some money on the table to the tune of about $7,500 in the 2019 year. So I just want to go through a pretty quick what is power factor and maybe how you can help improve the power factor at the energy plant and something for you to consider. So we've always been taught about power factor from the input side of it, looking from the customer side of it. I'm going to talk to you guys today briefly from the utility side of it. And so let's think about the energy plant. You have great big motors running. You've got pumps. You've got the chiller plant going. You've got air compressors, things like that. And power factor comes into play when you're using those electrical motors. So I'm going to take us back to a quick physics lesson, and I am by far not a physics instructor nor am I an engineer, so bear with me. But motors, the way motors work, they turn because a magnetic field is generated and collapsed within that motor. And that's what induces rotation in your motor, gets your motor going. So every time you create that magnetic field, it's drawing from the utility to create that magnetic field. And when it collapses, you're pushing back energy back to the utility. And that piece of it, when it collapses and you're feeding back, you're not really using what's being pushed back. It's more of about a half cycle or a 1/120 of a second. So as your motors start, they're going up and down, up and down, you're pushing back onto the system power that you're not using when it collapses. So the utility, from our standpoint, we still have to react to the power that you need, and that's at the top of that. So when you're at the full power, we have to provide you with that. Even when you drop down to the half second, we still have to provide you at the highest level that you use. So that's where a power factor comes into play. And so I'm not going to get into the weeds. We can talk about real power, which is the demand. We can talk about reactive power, which is Kvar. These are all things that we look at with power factor. But what I will say is the long and short of it is the smaller you make the pushback onto the system, the more savings you're going to have as a city. So you don't want to go over 90% power factor. It doesn't pay you to go over 90%. A lot of people will correct it all the way to 100%. That 10% in between, right now, our standard is at 90%. So my recommendations today are based on a 90% power factor. And you can actually fix your reactive power at the central energy plant by adding capacitors to either your equipment or your service. And basically, what those capacitors do, instead of pushing back that power to the utility, they're pushing it back to the capacitor bank. And that capacitor bank then can provide it back to you when you need it. So it's less of a draw on the system, less that we have to provide you, more efficient for you in the long run, and it actually impacts your monthly bill. So, and we have a distribution engineer that I've worked with, and back in February, I had them set a data recorder, and I did provide a copy of a power factor correction report to the city. And it recommended installing roughly around, I believe it is 80, 85 Kvar of capacitance. And those can be a static capacitor, it can be an automatic capacitor. You can look at adding that capacitor at each piece of equipment. If you have one piece of equipment that seems to be your energy hog, that's one way you can do it as well. But I wanted to come today just to let you know that there is some savings that could be had on the table. But my recommendation to you is take this assessment that we have done through our distribution engineering and reach out to consultants who look at power factor and actually do power factor correction. And we work with, there's probably over a handful that we work with throughout our company. Call them and get a bid. Ask them, what is it going to take to fix this? And what's the payback on it? And is this going to pay back within a year and make sense for the city? Or will you continue to leave $7,500 on the table and not correct it? So with that, I will stand for any questions you may have or comments.
Commissioner Hayes, do you have questions?
I was actually hoping that Lewis would weigh in first on this since he has some experience.
Yes, thank you, gentlemen. Yeah, I understand the power factor, and the explanation she gave was a good one. It's basically when that motor load is not actually performing any type of service, it's excited, that coil's got to be excited, and that's the draw. West Star, or Evergy, has to maintain not only their total generating package, they have to maintain a percentage over that to make up for that power factor loss over the whole system that they operate. So they'll have more capacity on than they actually need, and then that's why they have a power factor adjustment. So as she said, it can be done at the motor, at the motor load. You can install it static or automatic, and it will help reduce the cost of that power factor. To determine, you would need to find out, you know, the cost effects and what the timetable would be as far as the payback. But you don't want to exceed 90% because you're going to get no benefit. All you want to do is obtain 90%. And I don't, you know, at some point, if there's quite a bit of motor load on there, that might be the place to look at and start. Look at the size of motors and look how they're sequenced as far as those, that motor load coming on. And that might, where you might want to be, put the capacitors on those particular motors. I had a customer years ago that ran a grain elevator operation, and he was complaining about his power, about his demand and power factor. And I asked him how he used his operation, and basically, when he came in in the morning, he turned all his motor load on to get the motors warmed up. And I said, well, can't you sequence that? I said, what, why are you turning everything on at one time? Can you bring so much motor load on at one time and then sequence that off and then bring on other motor load as that process of moving grain or processing grain is handled? And he looked into it, and he did. And in this case, I don't quite remember what his power factor changed to, but his demand dropped by about a third, which was considerable cost savings for him. And with the type of motor load that we have, you know, potential is there to come up with some savings on the, to improve the power factor there. But as far as payback, you know, that would be who we, who would, who would we bring in to take a look at that, to see what the advantages would be, what the cost would be and all that. But, but you guys, from what she presented, you, you have an understanding of what the power factor, what power factor is.
Indeed. Thank you.
Commissioner, if I could add one more thing, right now, with power factor being so variable, you guys are hovering around the 240 KW demand mark. If you improved your power factor to 90%, you would drop that down to about 190 KW. And the difference in that is a different rate class. So it does make a difference.
You'd go, would go from...
You would go from medium general service to small general service.
To small general service.
Yep.
And are those rate comparisons between medium and small, are they available?
I can get those to you.
Okay.
I will tell you, it's more favorable for you to correct your power factor and stay on medium general service. It brings your cost down to about 8.3 cents, I think, a kilowatt hour.
Okay.
And I don't have the number on small general service. You guys are a bit of an anomaly because it is a high usage, low load with the chiller plant from the standpoint that you use a lot of kilowatt hours through the plant, but you don't have a ton of demand. And so our rates are more high demand, high usage are more favorable, but where you're at, we could keep you on medium general service, but you would benefit from being on medium general service with power factor correction. And that is where that $7,500 number came from.
Okay. On the, on the load of the plant, then, gentlemen, help me if I'm wrong, but do we not have 120 tons of chillers on site at the power?
I have two here, and he can probably answer that question.
We have two 300-ton units, which we only run one at a time.
Okay.
So he said, two 300-ton units that are run one at a time. I repeated that for the people on the phone.
Are there any other questions?
Well, I am understanding that in the past, and I don't know what timeframe this falls in, the facility there was upgraded for expansion for, you know, service for electricity, including upsizing equipment like transformers to carry the additional load that was predicted, but that expansion didn't happen. Are any of our costs for electricity based on the size of the service that is being set in place by Evergy? And if, is there any savings available to, to downgrade that service to a smaller transformer or other delivery equipment?
No. There is, there is not savings to downsize that transformer. I wasn't here when the expansion happened, so that's been at least five years ago. And there would have been a service contract at that time with Mercy Hospital. I'm not aware of a service contract on that particular transformer where you would pay any sort of a minimum.
That's my question.
Dean, the transformer load itself, it's, it's set when they apply for bringing added load on. So the, the one that serves the, let me think here a minute. The one that serves the main hospital is 277480, that's a Y system. The smaller transformer that serves the power plant, I believe that's, I believe that's 120208, would that be right? Why on that?
Let me look and see.
On that transformer?
I don't know that I have that information with me, and I did not pull that this morning.
Okay. Okay. But when looking at it previously, because I used to test both, both accounts, and they pretty much ran an equal KW. The transformer that fed the hospital and then the transformer that fed the, the power plant pretty much ran, ran similar KW load on each of them.
Yep. I will tell you, if there was an electric service agreement on that account, electric service agreements generally are only five-year agreements, so that would have expired already. So...
Okay.
So there are two electric services, one for the building and one for the power plant?
Correct.
And what you're talking about is strictly power plant?
Correct.
Consumption, which then is based upon the chillers, the motor operation?
Yes.
And that, and the, the power plant was sized for a total complex of 150,000 plus or minus square feet. So it's considerably larger than what's needed for what's remaining. So some of the problem could be from the size of the equipment compared to the job it has to do where you're, you're not getting up to the 90%. So...
Accurate.
In order to really consider the best usage of, of energy, the study shouldn't be based upon the motors, solely on the motors that are there, but probably the whole power plant should be compared to the size of the task that it has to serve to see where the savings would be. Because, you know, the motor startup, like you're talking about, it draws 2/3 to 3/4 additional power at motor starts. So you're talking of a capacitor, I'm not real familiar with capacitors, but they kind of store energy, don't they?
They do.
So that what you're seeing, where it kicks up and it's drawing more, that lag, it reserves back to the capacitor and then it's fed in...
Exactly.
To the, the system. Like, you could do individual capacitors on, on motors or...
Definitely.
Large would go at the service entrance, a panel or the transformer somewhere at that bank.
Yep. Exactly. And I will tell you, the Evergy study that we provided for you to take to a power factor specialist is a total service recording. So it's capturing all the equipment coming on, all the equipment shutting off, and it is a week through the weekends, 24/7, so that you have an accurate idea of what your load is.
Now, was that, did I, did I read that that was in January?
We did that back in January, February, so...
Okay.
And if you're wanting to relook at that to see if that's changed, I think this is the second one that we've done. We've done one, I think, probably a year or two ago. Time has slipped by, but, and we could sure do another one with summer months, even though the weather is changing, if you'd like to take a look at that to see what the difference in load between winter and summer is.
The, the chillers, do they operate year-round, Rick?
Yes.
So I'm just wondering about the comparisons of the load, if you go, you know, in, in the winter, of course, you're, you're dealing with boiler, pumps, and motors. The boiler, does it also operate year-round?
Yes. All the reheat loops in the building have steam power.
So looking at summer months in, in August or so, the, I guess that would be something to consider with the preliminary engineer's study of how accurate that was, since the chillers and boilers are 365 days a year. I don't know if the demand would be much different, that the study might be, be accurate for year-round, but that would be...
And I can take a look at that to see what your monthly demand actuals have run, to see if there's a lot of fluctuation. And if there is a lot of fluctuation, I can order another recorder to be set, and we can rerun it to do a comparison.
Yeah.
And that's all at no charge to you. We're just trying to help you figure out the best way to be the most efficient.
Yeah. Because $7,500 is a lot of money, and then when you add the engineering study, modification of equipment, that, and, and how long of use to get the return, that it, you know, the study's probably going to take at least just three years to pay...
I will tell you, most power factor consultants will come in and do the study and provide you with a bid and at no charge to you. And then if they do the work, that's when they make their money. So my recommendation today was just to reach out to them and get some ideas of what it's going to take, to see if it's feasible and to see if it saves money over the long run.
Okay.
I, I have another question. Being that we have two 300-ton units and we only, we only run one at a time, were you able to determine what actually the facility is sized for now and its reduced, reduced square footage as to what would be the tonnage needed to operate the system? It's evidently that 300-ton unit is probably overkill, being to the previous existing size of the facility. So at, at what point would, what tonnage would we, would be, be looking at to heat and cool that particular square footage now, which is somewhere around 68,000 square feet, give or take a couple of thousand? Do you have any idea?
That, I would have to defer that back to a heating and air specialist. I mean, we're strictly talking power.
Okay.
I don't have any other questions. Do you have any questions, Dean?
I'm good, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Lewis, anymore?
I'm good.
Well, thank you for providing us the information. We really appreciate entered Evergy's, it's hard to remember, we changed from West Star. But we appreciate the information and will...
Absolutely.
...consider this with future work and appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity, and if you have additional questions, Kelly, David, the crew knows how to get ahold of them.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
All right. Carrie, thank you. Laurie, thank you.
Would you like us to reach out to some of the consultants preliminarily, just to get some additional information on doing that study at no cost that she talked about?
That seems like a logical next step to me.
Yeah, I think it...
Okay.
We've got to know how much it's going to cost to go forward, whether we do or not. We need to know that, that number.
Okay.
And then evaluate, and then, you know, to, to consider, a lot of things to consider before any action is taken, but we definitely need to know how much, and to get proposals from consultants in that would...
We will proceed that direction.
Okay. Thank you. The next item on the agenda, item four, is a consent agenda. We had no modifications to the consent agenda, so at this time, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we adopt the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Item five, Items for Commission Action. Item A, Consider Change Order 11 with Hofer Hofer extending the contract schedule 126 days for the 1916 City Hall project, and consider an agreement with Trainer HL for additional professional fees related to this time extension.
Mayor Vance Kelly is on the phone to present their information.
Okay, Vance, would you like to go ahead and begin?
Yes, I would, Mr. Mayor. Commissioners, thank you for allowing me to summarize Change Order Number 11 for you. As we stated in our information that we provided, the contractor has experienced delays, series of delays with ordering the windows for the 1916 City Hall project. And because of the previously bid and agreed contract time of 427 days ends on September 28th, 2020, they are requesting additional contract time to be added to the project with, with this change order and with no associated additional costs. With this request, I asked Ian Pitts, the project manager on the project, to provide you a summary of what has transpired so that you have a better understanding of why some of the delays have occurred. And so I'd like to run through those with you, if you don't mind. The, when the project started, one of the first things that slowed the project down was the Part II tax credit application. Typically, these take 30 days to have reviewed by the state. However, the delay in receiving the approval, and we were, when you apply for tax credits, you want to make sure that you have that approval before any work starts. Because of that delay, we were three months behind in starting the project. And of course, what that meant is from a contractor's schedule, he had to reorder some of his work and subcontractors due to their availability and conflicts that they had with other projects. Once the project began in July of 2019, we began looking at Phase 2 of the project and believed that everything would be finalized by September. We even met with city staff in June to review and update Phase 2 to look at potentially being necessary to accommodate the police department in the building, if that option were taken, of the three options that we did develop. Trainer HL and city staff became concerned in August that if window installation went ahead as planned in Phase 1 without the finalization or finalized direction on Phase 2, the city would potentially pay for windows installed on the south and east elevations that would not be needed due to potential future Phase 2 addition. So at that time, we met with the contractor and the window subcontractor, believed there would be no issues with the project schedule if a direction was finalized by the end of September. So that was the expectation as that, at that point. In September, Trainer HL was asked by the city commission to provide additional service, services proposal for developing preliminary plans that would enable city staff and city commission to better visualize the spaces laid out by the program. At the December 19th, 2020 city commission meeting, this proposal was tabled for revisions to only focus on the option of combining, combining city administration offices and the police department in the historic 1916 City Hall. When presented again to the city commission in February, this additional services proposal was tabled until the commission could agree on the total Phase 2 project budget that they were comfortable with, with having the program modified. And through those discussions, that was certainly realistic and understandable for wanting that to happen. Meanwhile, the city, through Trainer HL, directed Hofer and Hofer to hold on the east and south elevation windows that might be potentially affected by a future addition and to prioritize the ordering for the remainder of the building's windows. And that's when we received shop drawings, and they were reviewed... And that's when we received shop drawings and they were reviewed by Trainer HL on April 13th, 2020. Now, because of work out in the field, the delay in ordering the basement windows did occur. We needed final measurements in order for the shop drawings to be prepared in the order to be placed. And that installation was delayed due to several factors, including the discovery of the unforeseen lintel deterioration in January and the revisions of the initially proposed complete lintel replacement as part of change order six, which did provide savings to the city. And then, of course, we had unexpect, unexplained delays by the stainless steel material supplier. And stainless steel was for the lentils, the new lentils. And then finer measurements, of course, could be done after those were installed and they were taken August 14th, once the mason had completed his actual lintel installation. So what we have right now, currently, the first windows were ordered in April with a delivery delayed until September. And they, in talking with Hofer and Hofer, the contractor believes that large, that the contractor to be largely installed at the end of the contract time by the end of this month, September 28th. The delay beyond the original contract time to January 31st of 2021 is because of the projected extended lead times now being quoted by the window manufacturer themselves. And this is because of the COVID-19 pandemic issues with the manufacturer. So the window installer cannot do the installation with, of course, without having the windows. So that is why Hofer and Hofer is projecting an additional six months through the end of January 31st, which is adding 126 calendar days to the contract time. Now, this was a challenge and we, we looked through it and this is why I asked Ian to kind of give us a summary because it, it is a challenge when you believe you have a, a, a large amount of time at the beginning of the project. Things happen. The contractor has been trying to work with the city in a way that benefits the city so that the city could save money by not purchasing windows prematurely. However, what that has done is because decisions still haven't been made on phase two, it has caused the delay in the ordering of the windows and receiving the windows and the installation of the windows. So all in all, based on our summary, we do recommend approval of this change order.
Okay, thank you, Vance. Where do we begin, commissioners? I guess first, maybe I'll reiterate from my previous opinion again that 427 days for a project of this is extremely long. Basically, we had the, the roof, the tuck pointing, the demolition and the window replacement could all stand alone. The work of one didn't require the other, even with the lintel replacement of the basement windows. The masonry openings were set during demolition. If you saw the rotten wood that had to come out, that should have been apparent then that the decisions could have been made because you're not going to change the masonry opening. The lintel bears on the masonry at the same elevation now than it did in 1916. So the opening hasn't changed and decisions regarding those sizes could have been made within the first weeks of the project. I understand and it's, it's, it shouldn't have happened that this contract stands on its own. Phase two discussion and all. Bottom line, the contractor should have honored his contract and gone ahead and worked with the original completion schedule that his contract said that those windows on the south were part of the contract. He should have proceeded and stayed on that. And we should have bought them one way or another if we took them out or, or not. I, I know that it's nice, you know, we took the roof out. By the time the roofing was taken out, the windows were still in the project. And it was sometime later that all of a sudden we say, well, if we're up, if we're going to tear this down, why are we putting the windows in when we'd already approved a change order to take the roof out? I, I know it's, in one sense, we're talking about a no-cost change order. But in reality, it's costing the city $11,000 for additional engineering fees. Initially, your, Vance, your contract with us was for a six-month construction schedule. And we received your proposal and asked to be revised. And it was changed from 26,000 or 28,000 to 14,000. And now we're looking at another $11,000 for additional architectural service to end the project. You know, the shop drawings and, and things, 60 to 90 days is more than enough, that should have been more than enough to work out the, the questions and, and get them approved. Installation of windows on a project this size, you know, 140 to 200 days is adequate. And we're, we're looking at, it couldn't be done in 427 days. COVID, that's another matter that, you know, construction by the governor was deemed essential. So it shouldn't have had the shutdowns that other businesses accepted. So was freight and transportation. That was essential. So it's really hard to see in a realistic look at how this affects, you know, changing from 427 days to 553 days to complete a, a window replacement project. You know, and then we'll have to discuss the additional phase. It's a, a point that, that the city is in a spot that makes it difficult for us, but we're, because we're accountable for the, the funds of the city and for us not to, to question. And, and look at this seriously. I think the commission would be remiss in our obligation as stewards of the city finances. I appreciate your detailed breakdown of the itemized schedule. It's unfortunate that phase two interfered with phase one work where phase one had a standalone contract that shouldn't have been affected by the phase two discussions, but I've, I'm just concerned with the additional costs that the city is, is looking at at this point for an additional 126 days of construction time. Commissioner Yussisi, Commissioner Hayes?
Yeah, you have, you have more experience, excuse me, in dealing with this and in contracts. And I, I find it hard to wrap my thoughts around this with window replacement, that we're still talking about this so far down into the project. And you're right, it's, it potentially is going to cost us another $11,000 for additional construction administration services. You know, in this contract for phase one that we approved with Hofer and Hofer, you know, we've, we've paid them good money to move this project along. And to me, the, as to where we stand as far as window replacement, to me, that falls on the contractor, Hofer and Hofer. Somewhere or another, this part of the project wasn't followed through. And now we're asked to not only extend it 126 days, but we're also looking to pay an additional $11,000. And I think, I think Hofer and Hofer have, bear the responsibility for that. That's, that's my own opinion.
Commissioner Hayes?
Well, I've, I've read the documentation that was provided and, and heard the presentation. And so far, I don't see what we need. I, I really think that it's, there has not been, it's not been successful in describing or establishing the direct correlation between our phase two discussions, the delay of the shop drawings and the windows that remain to be installed in the building. I, I still don't understand why those windows are not on site. And while the, it must make sense to, in project management world, I just don't see the correlation. And I would, I just regret that we're in this situation. It does not appear to me that it was entirely justified.
And I guess the bottom line is that completion will not be on September 28th. It will be somewhere in the future, possibly January 31st of 2021. We can't change that. We are looking at additional architectural fees, whether we approve the change order or not, but I, I don't think the change order should be granted. I think we just need to get the project done. And that's where we're at and now we can't change what's going to happen. But, you know, for us, I would feel remiss to approve a change order and, and sign it just because we're forced to by, by what we're looking at today. Commissioners, how do, how do you stand? Don't, and, you know, I'm asking for your own opinion to, don't.
In front of us today, we have some proposed motions. But we don't have the verbiage to, for a third alternative perhaps, where we would correctly instruct Hofer and Hofer and Trainer on how to proceed without change order 11.
I think if we don't act upon change order 11, that they still work to complete the job. We kind of got, what we have is two, two matters to discuss. We either extend the contract 128 days or, or we don't, work continues on without change order 11. The other is the approval of the additional contract administration services for Trainer HL. So the project will be completed without the change order. Justin, would you like to?
And I know it was mentioned that, Justin went in with Hofer and Hofer. It was mentioned that this was a standalone deal and I understand that the, yes, the masonry openings are still the same size. But as I looked through what I came up with, the different change order proposals and, and different things we're trying to work through with the city, I just want to bring up a couple, you know, a couple of dates. And Leonard, I know you're at one of the meetings where we gave a change order proposal. Nearly every, not single window, but window that's not a triple had district damage to it. We had to rebuild. And so when we did that, we gave a change order for that. And I believe when we, the first one we gave was, I'm sorry, I thought the meeting was this evening. I have all my documentation at the office, so I, on 219, we turned in a change order proposal for repairing the window jams that, that just in fact aren't there. During the last window replacement, they were what I call hammer-salt out of there. They were busted out, used metal clips. We had to come up with a solution to fix that. So when we, we didn't receive that change order executed by the city commission until 520. So that's three months. So that's something that does impact the window schedule. And when we talked about the lentils, I understand that, yes, that masonry opening is there. Every one of those windows is damaged, whether, and Dave's documenting it. And we worked through and replaced those in order to get the windows ordered. So you couldn't, we couldn't replace the wood window jam before we replaced the lintel. That, the first time we discovered that was on 1/8 of 20. Got the engineer's report, submitted a change order on 2/20 for the repairs. It was not approved. We came up with something to save money. The mason did a great job, I felt, in, in changing the way. Got with engineer, changed the way that, that design was done. And then we, we got that change order approved 5/20. So there was three months there of, of delay. When we did get that, we sent in the, the submittals on, on the material. Honestly, I take blame for the, the lintel material. I don't know what happened with it. It was on order. It got delayed several weeks and, and that is, I'll, I'll take some responsibility for that, even though I'm not the window, lintel provider, but it still falls under my, my duties. So that directly, we could not measure those windows till we got the lentils installed to then rework all the damaged wood on the interior of the window, whether it be, there, I think there was termite damage, there's water damage, to then order the, the windows in a correct size. And so that's, that's beyond the, the delays of what we thought. We had the last time that we were asked to give a credit for windows was on 6/15. Every time we do that, I think the window supplier said he updated the window quote eight or nine times, whether it be you have so long before you have to update the quote or they reprice it. So to hold that pricing, we did that continuously. I've got sheets and again, I wish I had my stack of papers. Where we, we changed, hold on these windows, give this, this scenario. It's really hard to order windows when you're given scenarios. You know, this should have been decided before and then brought to the project or, or held it out till phase two was decided what was going to happen. And I really felt like we were working with the city to try to make sure not buy windows that weren't needed. But a date of 6/15, which we originally hoped to be, be done by 6/15, is the last time we were asked to change and to pull windows out. When you do that, you stop the order, you pull the windows out and they resubmit the order. So to say it's a standalone deal and nothing else affected it, I just don't think is, is a correct statement. Was there, was there delays that, that happened? Sure. But I don't believe that it all falls on us. So you guys have any questions for me?
No, I, and I think there's a lot of factors that you brought out that, you know, there's communications that affected where we are now that, you know, you start. that, you know, you start in February looking at the windows, but the contract, you know, could have been started earlier. And the thing that it's costing us is the additional expenses.
I agree.
Your contract was standalone from Phase Two. And, you know, we got the credit for the, the roof before June. If we were going to delete the roof because we're tearing down that portion of the building, why did we leave the windows in? That was kind of an afterthought of, of us. I remember we approved that change order, and then it was like, well, then looking at it around June, why are we putting windows in? If we're going to tear it down, we took the roof off.
I'm only supplying the change orders I'm requested to give.
Well, we need the project done as soon as possible.
I agree. And, and it's costing us money as well. I mean, the temporary fence, temporary toilet dumpster. We have cost in this thing as well, that we're not asking for any money for either, that I feel like because of some of the delays that, that we're, we're eating. So don't feel like that we, we're not eating some cost here as well. So, and in these change orders, most of them, or near, I think all of them, we saved the city money. We went to the time material, took a little time to work through what we were going to do there, how we were going to do it. But that was then, the intent is to save the city money and just be upfront, transparent, and, and fair with that. And, and I think we were that way with ordering the windows too, and moving those dates all around. And the lentils, we were able to come up with, with a way to save the city money. So I think that needs to be noted as well.
Okay. Do you have any questions, Commissioner Hayes, for Justin?
No, Justin, thank you for the information. I think that helped me understand some of the delays and, and possibly place the, the responsibility on, on the correct entity. Thank you.
Louis, do you have any questions?
No.
Thank you, Justin.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
So we have before us concerning the change order, that we can table the change order and do nothing? Or we can look at the two options that have been given us regarding the change order and act upon one of those. The project will be completed as soon as possible with or without the change order. So.
Question then, Mr. Mayor. Are we on a pay-as-you-go agreement and with the Trainer at this point? Or are these monies that we're talking about, you know, a lump sum contract of, of one value only? Because if we proceed just to get it done as soon as possible, how will, how will, if we're just on a pay-as-you-go contract, would that be a better arrangement? Because we don't know how long it should take and how many visits will be required?
I think, yeah. I think that was in, and Vance, correct me if I'm wrong. In your letter addressing the, the additional charge, didn't you state that the $11,000 would be based on an hourly and monthly basis?
That is correct, Mr. Mayor. So you'll only be charged for the time extended. So if Hofer and Hofer is able to complete the project faster, then we shouldn't be incurring the, the total amount. And that's what we set up for the last extension as well.
So this motion that's before us here is not to, should probably state not to exceed rather than just a lump sum value? As it reads now, it's just a lump sum with no, no verbiage for, for variation.
If I could interject, in our letter dated September 3rd, it says estimated maximum architectural fee. So that is the maximum amount. And so if you'd like to add verbiage to very clearly state that it's on an hourly, monthly billing cycle, you can add that, and the information would still be valid, I believe.
I think what Commissioner Hayes is referring to, Vance, is we have a proposed motion that it just reads as the amount of $11,000 for additional construction. I think what Commissioner Hayes, meaning it probably should read, to go in, in sequence with your letter, $11,000 maximum not to exceed for additional. Does that clarify?
It's something, something to the effect that in an amount not to exceed, and, and then the value. And then this timeframe that's indicated here, August to January, seems inappropriate then if there is no change order. What should that timeframe be replaced with?
I think it could be changed to the end of construction approximately. We need, we need to have a, a date that this proposal would end so that if something happened and it went on to February, that Vance would not be charging or, or lose additional charges. But then the maximum not to exceed covers his expenses up to $11,000.
So just, what is the significance of the beginning date in this motion? Because it seems to me that this is just an extension. So that we're currently, we should be currently covered until the original end date, shouldn't we? With the hourly services rate?
So, Mr. Commissioner?
Yes?
In our original proposal, we had estimated a much shorter original construction time period. So that's what we had included in our construction administration portion. When it became obvious that the contractor, Hofer and Hofer, was going to need their entire time, we came before the commission with a request for additional services based on hourly, monthly charges with a not to exceed amount that took us through July because we thought that that would be sufficient time for the contractor to finish his work. So at the end of July, while we had submitted a proposal for $14,200, actual hours spent totaled $22,330. So there was an $8,130 worth of shortfall through July. So our construction administration ended in July. We spent more time than the commission approved, so we're not asking for that charge. But we are requesting from August through not to exceed January, the $11,000. So that time period of August to not to exceed January still probably should be in your motion.
So our extension of your contract for contract administration terminated July 31st. It didn't match the contract.
That is correct, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so before us, we have, have two matters to, to decide on. The first, let's decide on change order number 11. Either we table the change order, or we make a motion to grant the change order. Commissioners?
I'm in favor of tabling.
Okay, with no, with no motion? Is that a motion, Commissioner?
That is a motion.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Most, those opposed, motion carried. The second motion deals with the city's responsibility for additional engineering or architectural inspection from August 1st to January 31st. So do I have a motion?
I move to approve a proposal from Trainer HL in an amount not to exceed $11,000 for additional construction administrative, administration services beginning August 1st, 2020 through January 31st, 2021, primarily due to the extended contract schedule.
Yeah, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carried. The next item on the agenda is consider awarding a bid for purchase of a new ambulance from Spark Funding. David?
Mayor, first, I would like to thank Lacy, Trish, with Mac and our county commissioners for all the hard work they've done with the Spark Funding and putting this together and allowing us this opportunity. There was a short turnaround. Once it was approved by the county, and then it went to the state of Kansas for approval, and then we knew we were awarded the grant funds, we quickly put out a bid spec for a unit. Our procurement policy is great in that once Lacy put that out there, I received a ton of phone calls from manufacturers across the United States. Due to the Spark Funding across the nation, a lot of ambulances are being purchases, purchased. A lot of the, the Spark grants are supposed to be expended by December 30th. At that time, there's some question, and Lacy probably could speak more to that. It can extend a little further, but it has to be a supply issue or something like that. But we're supposed to have receipt of it and expend the funds by December 30th. We did receive, as you have in your bid tab, it was four, four bids. With the funds that we were granted, the North Star unit comes under the amount. Anything that exceeded the grant funds, we would be responsible for that amount over. This does not what we expect, but it is a unit that is acceptable to the city. Our bid does say we are allowed to accept or reject any bids. We did visit with them about doing the additional work, painting the unit, installing the striker cop mounts and the UV light for disinfecting for COVID-related, which was a $6,100 option, which then gets us to the final price of the 164, 162, plus the $1,500 for radio installation. So it is my recommendation to the commission that we accept the Braun Northwest unit, which should be available in about 30 days. So we will be able to expend the funds in receipt before the December 30 deadline.
David, this, this unit was scheduled to be purchased as a replacement anyway, was it not?
We had Lacy's be in the 2021 budget. So this is funding that Lacy will do something different with or the commission. I think we still have another one scheduled next year, but, yes, sir.
So we had a scheduled replacement, and this would be one of those?
Correct.
David, you said something about a $1,500 expenditure. Is that included in the 164, 162 value?
I think it's, I have it a total in your motion before you in the RCA. And I'm sorry, I did not have that in front of me.
I have, I have a document here in front of me that has blanks in it. Do I have the wrong one?
Yeah, it doesn't have the right motion on it. The one I sent you last night would be the correct motion. Let me bring that up.
The 164 is not included of the radio installation.
The 1,500, it's, it's one, it is not. It's like 166.
It's a 165, 662.
There you go. 165, 662 is the $1,500 for radio installation done by a local radio guy.
Why is Braun the only one that went with the smaller box and smaller?
It was just a demo that they had available is why they bid that. I have received multiple calls, Mayor, from people, but the demos were going as quick as they had them. Most people, Will Coach called, is an example. They called me and said they usually have demos sitting. They've literally sold them all out through the Spark Funding. I mean, we have an ambulance dealer here today, he may be able to speak to you. I mean, they're just going through the Spark Funding. People are picking up whatever's available. And there's different, and Lacy will tell you, there's different interpretations of what the December 30th deadline is. I've heard it from all of them. Oh, yeah, you can build one, and you just supply the state a letter that says the supply and demand, and it can be extended or not. Then there's others that are holding to the December 30 deadline. You have to have it, and the fund's expended. So Braun Northwest picked this up off of our website and our procurement policies where they saw the opportunity and placed the quote to the City of Independence.
So this 350, that's a one-ton?
Yes, I believe.
And this, the size of this vehicle meets the needs, the accommodations of what we would be looking for?
Yes.
Smaller box.
It is a smaller box, it's a 155.
Okay.
Yes, and it will, we have ran this size of box before. And it will accommodate. It has been, Sean has taken it to the staff. We have reviewed it thoroughly. We've done some reference checks and everything. And we feel comfortable with this unit.
And the idea is being we have funding available with the deadline of September 30th is to go ahead and expenditure those funds. So there's no question whether we meet or we've, we've gone over the, the timeline.
Correct.
And then if I understood right, this will be, we will take possession of this no later than December 30th of 2020, is that correct?
Correct. We, we should have it within two to four weeks.
Oh, okay.
Yes, two to four weeks to get the painting and the striping decals, all of that done. And we should receive delivery in two to four weeks.
All right, thank you, David.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
I have none.
I have none.
At this time, then I'll entertain a motion?
I make a motion that we move to approve the purchase of a 2020 North Star 155-1 demo on a 2019 F-35 chassis from Braun in the amount of $164,162 plus $1,500 for the radio installation from a local vendor for a total of $165,662.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, David. Next item on the agenda is consider approving the revised lease and the revised maintenance agreement with the Independence Gun Club. Kelly?
Yes, Mayor and Commissioners, we have been working with the FAA. We modified the, the lease language to include the changes that the FAA requested that we do, which related to the, the maximum length of the lease being no more than 50 years with renewals, and then also mentioning the safety of the airport. I did ask about the lease amounts, I got no response on that. We are needing to modify, as we told you before, to change that from aeronautical land to non-aeronautical land. The survey has been ordered, that's in process. That's in process. Once that's done, we'll work with Lochner with the requirements on the Federal Register to get that done. But I did ask if we could proceed on getting these leases taken care of, and the FAA said we didn't have to wait as long as we were still actively working on getting that done. Could not find any reference for any reason why the maintenance agreement couldn't be the same amount as the lease agreement in our research. I anticipate that at the time, they probably used to say just been audited on charging a fair rate. They probably just didn't want them to match. I don't know. I'm just presuming that. I couldn't find anything in writing to justify that either way. So we did modify it so they are the same, so there's a net, you know, net zero between the two. I did, because it's a little bit confusing, I did map out on your aerial there. The area on the right is the leased land overlaid on the aerial, and then the maintenance agreement takes care of the berm, which is also outlined on the left of your screen there, just so that it was clear what each agreement referred to.
Okay. Any questions from the Commission?
I have none.
I have none, Mayor.
There are no questions, then I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the revised Independence Gun Club lease as prepared by the city attorney with modifications as requested by the FAA.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried. Before we go on to item D, Commissioner is interested in a break for five minutes.
May I make that motion to revise the maintenance agreement first?
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. There's two motions.
I move to approve the revised maintenance agreement as prepared by the city attorney.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Now?
Yes.
Second.
Okay. We'll recess for 10 minutes. That'll put us back in session, or, excuse me, five minutes. At 10:18, we'll return to session.
So I will back up to task number six and what I mean by moving forward on that. The original scope was to evaluate options to address the filter backwash waste stream per the KDHE requirements. We did that. We submitted in a report looking at two different options, along with cost estimates associated with that on July the 14th. Had a meeting with Terry, evaluated that, picked a direction, and at that point, we're moving forward with that. And in the contract on task six, filter backwash, it said, "Design of any improvements related to these identified waste streams will be done by supplemental service." So we're at that point, we made a decision. We know the direction, so we're moving forward with that next step. So that is one part of the supplemental. And then the second part, task 14, the modification to the filter building, originally, the contract was based on using and modifying the existing space of the filter building or the existing footprint. Well, after some evaluation and some site trips and some kind of kicking it around, looking at some options of what may be best for the city now and moving forward, the decision was made to expand the existing footprint. So that is part of this supplemental, too, to do the new design for the building expansion of the filter building, as well as removing the chlorine building, which was part of the original scope. Since we're not going that option now, that is, we put that in there that that is, has been removed from the scope. So I can answer any questions on that or dive a little deeper into that as far as the cost associated with that, if you would like.
So on the addition to the building that we're, we had talked about, the additional offices and the ramp, in this supplemental agreement, all you're providing is a study to, what, relocate utilities around the building? Or you're not including the actual construction drawings, are you?
Yes, that does include, that does include the instruction, the construction documents, which will be architectural, civil MEP and structural. And the fee is to produce the construction documents for that revision, which included surveying, actually, the surveyor was a small piece of that, but we included his fee to come in and locate those utilities that were, that were located, that we potholed, that you guys potholed, and he just sent his bill to us, and we just added that into this supplemental, which was a minor part of it. The geotech service, now that we're doing that new building, we need to punch, go out, send our geotech back out and punch a hole right there so that we can come up with some footing design and foundation design based on what's in that location. That's a part of it. Relocation of the utilities that are in that new building footprints, which is going to be relocating that 14-inch water line, sanitary sewer cleanout, probably relocating the gas service and maybe some building drains. That is part of the fee, and as well as the additional structural engineering fees for the foundation and building design for the expansion. So that's all included in that.
I guess I don't, looking at the six items under item four, it says, "Prepare 90% design plans to detail proposed relocation of process piping and utility design plans. Should include profiles of piping to be relocated." I don't see, I see structural service, additional structural analysis, and design for new filter building. But which item, I guess, includes that states that the supplemental agreement will handle all the architectural designs for that construction?
It, you are correct, Terry. It doesn't specifically say that in there. But it is, it is included to produce the final sealed construction documents for that. I can modify this if need be to put that in there of all means.
Yeah, if it's, if it's not clear, I just don't want to have a misunderstanding now. I think the wording, if that building, actual square footage office addition is included in the proposal, I think we need to have it clearly read that we'll all understand. If it's not, it's not, but if it is, then we need it specifically called out.
Okay.
Okay. Commissioners, am I missing something on it or?
I don't have any additional comments, so please proceed.
I think your point's well taken.
So do you mind clarifying that and resubmit it that we can?
Sure.
Cover it, okay?
Sure, I can do that. I'll send it, I'll put that comment in there that it includes everything, architectural, based on the new square footage expansion, science field, construction documents, and we'll send that back to you.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Then we'll just table this for right now.
Okay. So, hey, Terry, can I ask a question? So I'll get this back to you, if not today, tomorrow at the latest. So do we, we've actually already proceeded, and that's our, that's our decision with the plans, we call for submitting the 60% design plans to the city on 9/23 with these modifications. Do we need, are we going to have to wait until the next city commission meeting to get a signed supplemental pack?
May I make a suggestion?
Pardon me?
May I make a suggestion?
Yes.
You could do the motion, subject to approval by the mayor and the city attorney, so that way you're reviewing that the language includes the additional, if you would like.
The Commissioners are in agreement with making the motion pending upon review and approval by the city attorney and the mayor?
I am.
I am.
Okay. Then with that, I'll entertain a motion to that effect.
So I make a motion, I move to authorize the mayor to sign the supplemental agreement with PEC pending upon modification to the contract and being approved by the city attorney and the mayor in the amount of $24,442 for additional work, not covered in the original contract.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried. Thank you, Chuck. Thank you, Terry.
Okay, thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Have a great day, and I'll get that to you, Terry.
Thank you.
Okay, bye-bye.
Item E, consider direction regarding Central Park and North Park Boulevard complex.
Mayor, in reviewing this, this project with city staff, and we thought it would be best if we had an overall plan that was updated before we did the electrical review, so that the electrical engineer understands what features will be where and what expansion is needed. And this would be in line with what we have done on previous projects like this. We did have a 2007 plan, but that was back when the soccer fields were located on Peter Pan, and now their focus has changed. So our recommendation is to move forward with a contract with Indigo Design, who did the 2007 plan, so that we have that in place first, and then after that, we can utilize that documentation in the engineering proposals.
Okay. This is kind of a different situation with, where the city's provided a preliminary plan for another entity and trying to get it all orchestrated together. The original concept was prepared jointly but funded by the city.
Yes.
And now, looking at the soccer fields, what had been prepared was just a sketch, so this will take into consideration the needs that the Rec Commission had expressed for the soccer fields and work along with them. Am I correct, Kelly, to prepare a revised plan? This plan will be funded, again, by the, the city. At some point, the project will transition from the city providing the drawings that City Rec would take over the project.
Yes. Unless the city wished to fund portions of the project through, I know it's been discussed, special use sales tax, that will give you the cost estimates if you wish to determine that. You will have that information.
Commissioners, you're, have you had a chance to review the background information and what's being proposed today? Commissioner Hayes?
I did. The, it seems like a good place to start is an agreed-upon plan, so while preparing a, a proposal for this land usage would be good, I would encourage that we also collaborate with the Rec Commission on the details so that we are both in agreement, both entities are in agreement that the usage is, aligns with the future needs. So a good plan is a great place to start for the rest of the conversation.
Commissioner Yussisi?
I'm in agreement with Mr. Hayes, with Dean.
At, at some point, the Rec Commission needs to take over the drive for the project. You know, the, the preliminary plan, I think it's one that we can work with and help them, but at some point, they're going to need to step in to bring to us information on how the project proceeds. I think when we originally started looking at, at the, the request for soccer fields, we were, you know, I, I thought they were wanting the whole thing, and I think it was a beginning to start clearing and removing trees, so this will really aid in, in getting a, a vision of what has to happen down there. One of the items that was discussed was a boundary survey or a topo.
And I got that this morning.
With, the, the scheduling of, of that will be probably dependent upon the clearing of the trees, because with the removal of the trees, you're going to be modifying the ground, and you wouldn't want to do a topo. You wouldn't want to do a topographical study as it is now than when you've gone in and you pulled out all the rip balls and, and re-levelled to have a change of elevation, since it is in the floodplain, elevations documented and submitted to FEMA are going to, or the state are going to be real critical, so, you know, to go ahead and, and looking at preparing survey before the trees are grub, are cleared.
I, I suggest we put together a team with representatives of the Rec Commission, city staff, and one commissioner, and we schedule a conference with Doug Pickert and discuss all of this and determine what the best plan of action would be. That's how I would suggest we proceed.
Okay, I see the Rec Commission definitely being the lead on the facility use. It'll be important to have the input with the development. David's really worked hard on getting clarified our floodplain development.
Yes.
And to keep that direction from the beginning, that it can all go forward, not back up. I think that would be a good process. The, the proposal looks like for the survey is broken into a boundary study and a topographical study is separate, so it might be, that being then anticipation of the surveyor to get a boundary established and then come back later.
And then I think we also need to discuss with the Rec Commission how we can partner on the cost for this, this, because they would need that regardless of what was done. They would have to have this topographical study done. So it, it would be part of their project cost regardless, so I think we need to discuss with them how we can share and partner on that cost. And that could be part of that first conversation as well.
Part of this conversation is also to consider continued progress on the question of lighting to the ball fields that are currently there and will go into use with the spring baseball season. So is any of this conversation that we're having right now going to delay the start of the baseball season in the spring?
Well, Indigo Design indicated, once they got approval, that their process would take six weeks. Now, if they need this topographical survey and it's delayed, that could delay that time schedule, but, so that, that should be adequate time to move forward with the electrical proposals after the, the plan is approved.
There's probably ways to get general topographical information of what's there, but to actually do the design data should, should wait.
Yeah.
It's all going to be.
He can get started, for sure.
Right. Right, because once, once the area is designed, then, then you could look at the whole electrical use for the region, for that area, and determine how best to serve it, whether, I think, right now, there might be, each field is separately metered or many locations for electrical service, and I don't know, you know, I'm not an electrical engineer, but if it would be possible to have one electric service that would be located outside the floodplain and then feed the other facilities from there. But I think that's where, once the design is done, then it frees up to hire an electrical engineer to analyze all the needs in the existing buildings and, and come up with a, a plan for the whole complex instead of just looking at each individual item separately, and then, you know, you just, you know, at some point, when you're working on an old car, it's time to pull the engine and put a new one in. And that's kind of like, there's a lot of electrical problems there that Evergy is addressing metering concerns, but what do we know about the service beyond there in the buildings and how best to serve any future buildings? So this would definitely be the first step in, in moving forward and, and setting a budget, is Doug was going to do a preliminary budget.
He'll do cost estimates as well. And also, back on the electric, Lacy has talked to Evergy, and they, they are going to look at this project, so there could be some opportunity of partnering with them, potentially.
To do what?
To, to look at this project and see if there's any way they could assist us as well. So I think we will, potentially could have multiple partners on this project.
All the, all the ball fields, they all have an existing meter on them, and I believe all the metering points are single-phase, with the exception of Sinclair Field. You've got a three-pot bank there, and I think that serves, I think that's four eighty-volt. Is that, would that be correct? I believe we've got, I think we've got potential trans, metering potential transformers and current transformers on that pole, so that's the only one that's different from the other fields. The others are strictly single-phase. So, okay. Just trying to go by memory.
So before, in our, our motions, we're looking at preliminary design work that would involve both the city and City Rec. The other suggested motion to consider a proposal for electric engineering service, that would possibly be better to hold until we actually have the preliminary design done. So at this time, if, if the commission desires to proceed, we'd be considering the proposal regarding preliminary design with Indigo. So at this time, I'll call for a motion.
I move to accept a proposal from Indigo Design to work with city representatives and IJRC to redesign and prepare cost estimates for the Central Park and North Park Boulevard Sports Complex to incorporate soccer fields and supporting infrastructure.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried.
Could we have one commissioner on that team to work on this project with us?
Yeah, if you want to go ahead and, you know, if you want, I'd, I'd be glad to serve for one of the other commissioners.
That makes sense to me.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Kelly, the agenda that was printed available had item F. This is the one that was added last night, "Consider initiating a public hearing before the planning commission to consider a tax amendment."
That was under the consent agenda.
Okay.
So you've already proved that, we're on the reports.
Okay. I misunderstood, since we had E on the items for commission action, and when we discussed it last night, I thought it was added there, so.
Oh, I apologize.
That's where I had put it, and I was looking at the agenda that I printed and following, and it wasn't there, so.
I can certainly add some more description to that item, if you would like.
No, that's, that's fine, since we already acted on it, it was. So, okay, then that takes us to item six, Reports, the two thousand and twenty census update.
The census takers are out. The data I'm able to pull off their website is only the self-response update. It doesn't include what the census takers are doing, and they must be doing a really good job, because we're in the top five of higher response for the state of Kansas. These are just the self-response rates. I updated them last night. Actually, Cherryville's edged ahead of us a tiny bit. I do thank the commissioners that helped us. Some of them hung some door hangers for us. I've gotten a few calls. Well, I already filled out the census. Why did I get this door hanger? So, so they, they are being received, so that was, was helpful. We did receive some banners that were sent to the mayor that April is, is having Jerry Bright put up in some, some yards, and some of the census tracts that were having issues getting results on. And so, I mean, it is moving along. We're down to the, only have a two or three weeks left, so.
Good. Good. City board minutes. Commissioners, do you have any question regarding the minutes that were included in the packet?
I do not.
I do not.
Then, item seven, city managers' comments. Do you have any comments, Kelly?
On the apparatus bay update, and I know we had a citizen that asked about that as well, they're still waiting on the survey data to get the bids out, so we don't have the bids out yet for that, but they thought that they would get that here shortly, and if they get it in time, it's still on schedule to be brought to you back on the twenty-fourth for approval. If the surveying data gets delayed much more, then that will push that project back, so I just wanted to give you an update on that.
Okay, thank you.
Also, we have that reminder of your special commission training on the Atlas Training on the sixteenth at nine AM, and so I just wanted to remind you of that. Yes, it'll be here.
Okay.
So.
Hey, commissioners' comments. Commissioner Yussisi?
I would like to thank staff, Chief Harrison, for looking into, Commissioner comments that I brought up the last meeting on the middle school and the crossing about a potential blind spot. And, yeah, it's, it's been there, you know, for a long time, that's been pointed out, so maybe the school will come up with some type of resolution, and I like the chief's suggestion about having the kids go to the corner, to the, to the south end and do that crossing where there, there's more visibility for them rather than trying to cross where they're crossing. So hopefully, that will be resolved through the school system. Thank you, chief.
Commissioner Hayes?
I would like to elevate a, a citizen concern, and as we have just completed the listing of the streets that will be repaired in the near future, one of the, one of the frustrations that citizens notice is that the recently repaired streets sometimes quite soon afterwards experience excavation work for waterline work, and that destroys the new surface. So I think the frustration is that at some point in time, a collaboration, we're going to do everything we can as a city to collaborate with between departments so that that type of, of thing is minimized, and I look forward to, to seeing that collaboration myself, but I just wanted to elevate that concern.
And the utilities director did review the locations for upcoming resurfacing and did not note any known major issues. Is that correct, Terry? So.
So as we, as we approach the work to identify the roadwork for two thousand and twenty-one, the sooner we can give that information to the utilities director, the more likely it would be that he would be able to respond to any need.
We're looking at that very closely, what the schedule is for overlaying and how we can address the water lines prior to that, so that, you're probably speaking of South Seventeenth, we've had some issues down there, so. And unfortunately, that line didn't get replaced before that got overlaid, and, and it has caused some issues. But yes, we're looking at that very closely, and Mike and I are working together and trying to make sure this doesn't happen again, so.
That's awesome, and I think that the quality of the patches is dramatically better as we are using a concrete. as we are using a concrete patch for that kind of work, as opposed to going back in with a, some kind of a lower grade asphalt that doesn't work as well.
Yeah. The availability of asphalt is very difficult, and we normally use cold patch, and it just doesn't work well, so.
You gotta go thicker, and you gotta compact the asphalt.
Yeah.
An inch and a half on a street won't work.
Just about be better off compacting rock in than that cold patch.
It's definitely been an issue not having our asphalt plant any longer that we used to be able to utilize for those patches.
Thank you, Terry.
And I have no, no comments. So that brings us to public concerns, none today? Okay, great. Executive sessions. Let's see. I move that we recess for an executive session pursuant to the exception KSA 75-4319B2 for consultation with attorney on matters that would be deemed privileged in an attorney-client relationship for discussion of legal matters. The open meeting will resume, what do we think, 20 minutes?
11:05. That's about 15.
11:05? Okay, the meeting will resume at 11:05 in the Civic Center. So do I have a second?
Second.
And attending the meeting will be the commissioners, city attorney, the acting city manager, and Terry Liebarger. So I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried.[733.23] We're now back in session, there's no action to be taken from our executive session. And at this time, I make a motion that we recess for an executive session for review and discussion of city manager applications pursuant to the non-elected personnel exception,